Welcome to tonight's meeting of March 31, 2025. Do we have anybody that had questions for the agenda first? I didn't see any written or anything, so just double checking. Counselor reports, Counselor Sinead? Counselor Camillian?
No.
Counselor Hott? I'm sorry. I look at her and go Counselor Hott, Counselor Irons.
I went to the opening of the WFD Citizens Academy, and I loved the enthusiasm of the people there that were participating. I stayed long because I got there late because I had to work late. Anyway, I learned about, a lot about HIPAA laws, which is amazing how the fire tried to keep everyone's privacy when they send them to hospitals or whatever people. So that was interesting and good to know, actually. So I appreciated going. It was great. Thanks.
I was there too, and I think there's three recruits sitting in that class from their, when they went around to introduce themselves. So I think we have two young ladies and a gentleman that was sitting in front of me. So that was fun. It's always a good, good class. I had AC rep last week and this week, or this week I did. And, not this week, last week, sorry. And the only thing that we know, all of the different bills that we have had before us, and the only thing with, they were waiting for the budget to get dropped, and there's now, they feel a 40% possibility of going into recession. And the bill was, the budget finally was dropped, so it's sort of a week late, and so that just means probably things are going to be rapid fire. So it's been sort of quiet this week, so that's the reason they just think. And that was great news about the film festival coming to the area. Had meeting this morning with our staff, with a weekly meeting that Mayor Potem is usually on and myself, dealing with our legislation. And again, we will see a couple of things this week, but it was sort of a slow last week. I went to the CDBG meeting on, I think it was Wednesday night or Thursday night. We waited until after 6:20. Nobody showed up, so we left. Westy Baseball, I threw out the first pitch on Thursday afternoon, and it was cute. The pitcher said, "You didn't do as bad as I thought you were going to do." At least I got it to him. We had NADA last week. We're getting ready to narrow down what the focus is going to be. 287, Highway 287, Highway 7, our biggies. Next week, I go with Northwest Mayors and Commissioners to DC to work on transportation. And we have, I think we're up to 12 meetings in a day and a half. And so we fly in Wednesday night. We're on the hill all day Thursday, and then Friday morning before we get on a plane that afternoon, we have meetings until about 11:00. So it is fast-paced, and we have to, we're about 23, I think, going. So there's some things that are on top of each other, so they split up the groups. And so this morning's meeting was just who's going to go where and what all we're going to be doing. But Highway 7 and 287 are on their list also. So at NADA, we've talked about, at some point, the two groups may need to join forces because Highway 7 starts in Boulder or ends in Boulder, however you want to look at it. And we have Brighton and everything in between. So same with 287 from Longmont to Broomfield. So those are things that we keep talking about because part of us at NADA go to the Northwest Mayors and Commissioners, so we have overlap. And it just makes sense that where we can gang up and have the same goals would be good. So.
Mayor, can I add one thing?
Sure.
So the academy last week, my favorite part was there's one of the attendees, he's an author, and he's writing a, well, he wrote already, a murder mystery based in Westminster.
Oh.
It's out there on Amazon. I forgot the name now, should have remembered the name. But that was pretty fantastic that we're out there.
So I think he kidded him and said, "So is the next one going to be about the fire academy?" And what happens?
Right, because that one was about his experience with the police department. And he went on ride-alongs and did stuff to get more information. So this time, he might write about fire.
I thought of him when I, because I know we're in the middle of our one book, and maybe we should have, yeah, the author.
That would be great.
That would be great.
I'm so sorry, since we're on that topic, I did attend that event, that one book, the author speaking. And I just want to give a shout out to everyone from the leadership team, from libraries. They did an incredible job. The turnout was, I think, over four times as many folks as last year. It was massive turnout. And the author from Go as a River was just really inspiring. I haven't had a chance to read it yet, but I absolutely will in the next couple of weeks because she was so inspiring. She grew up on the Western Slope, and so a lot of what is in the book was incorporated with her upbringing from hiking and camping outside, which are some of my favorite activities, and I think a lot of Coloradans' favorite activities here. And I just want to say, the event was fantastic. She was inspiring to listen to, and I highly encourage folks to go out and read Go as a River because it's all about Colorado, and it was, it was a lot of pride in that room. It was really neat.
And I know from the plane trip, you've been reading it.
Yep, I'm almost done. It starts slow, but it gets really, really good.
I heard her encouraging. It starts slow, but go ahead and get started.
Yeah, keep going, because it gets really good.
And one question for you, City Manager. Part of that JBC, the bill that they released, I, I think it's $71 million of transportation grants to local governments that are now cut. I'm curious if you can dig into that. And other grants, there's some other grants to municipal governments that were cut. So I'm curious what that line item inventory is of what was cut.
City Manager, you have anything?
I do have a report for the time at the dais, starting at 7:00. For now, I would like to acknowledge and thank Mr. Larry Dorr for being Acting City Manager all of last week and this past weekend. So thank you.
You did a great job.
To Larry. Yes, and thank you to all of you for supporting me being away last week on vacation. That was really nice to get away. I missed it, and I'm back, so happy to be here. Thanks, Larry. That's it.
Okay, we will see everybody at 7:00.
Welcome to tonight's meeting of March 31, 2025. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the City of Westminster City Council meeting of March 31, 2025. We appreciate your attendance and would like to remind everyone that our meetings are governed by the rules of decorum, which are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect during the meetings, including breaks and transitions. To ensure a welcoming and respectful environment, we kindly ask everyone to adhere to the following expectations. No attendee shall disrupt the meeting. Threats and intimidation are strictly prohibited. Audible expressions of support or opposition for any speaker are not allowed. Signs and placards are prohibited inside the chamber. All attendees must remain seated in the designated seats and refrain from occupying aisles or blocking doorways. Thank you for your cooperation and understanding as we work together to maintain a productive and respectful meeting. If you are here to speak during public comment, please sign up in the lobby. It closes at 7:15. Roll call, please. Counselor Carmelia.
Present.
Counselor Demott. Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Counselor Ha.
Present.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Mayor Protem Nirmela. And Counselor Ireland.
Here.
Do we have a motion to excuse Counselors Demott and Mayor Protem Nirmela? Counselor Azadi.
We have moved to excuse Counselors Demott and Mayor Protem Nirmela.
Counselor Ha.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Counselor Demott and Mayor Protem Nirmela. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That brings us to consideration of minutes of March 17. Counselor Carmelia.
I move to approve the minutes of March 17, 2025. City Council meeting is presented.
Counselor Azadi.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of March 17. Are there any further comments or discussion items? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I am going to take privilege and ask us to go to item 10B tonight, our public hearing. And would like to open the public hearing. It is 7:02. And City Manager Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. I could call up Planning Manager, Mr. John McConnell. He has an update and a request of City Council.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Counselors. This evening, we had a request from the Uplands applicant to respectfully request that their case be continued to the April 14 meeting so that they may get the full council's consideration of their application.
Any questions? Close the public hearing?
Mayor, if you...
Or do we...
If there's a motion to continue the item to April 14th, then the council could, if it's seconded, vote upon that motion.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Carmelia.
I move to postpone this until April 14.
Counselor Ireland.
Thank... Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue the public hearing for the Uplands to April 14 agenda. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please. Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Counselor Ha.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-0 vote. So it is 7:04, and I will close that public hearing for the moment. And that brings us back to presentations. Do we have someone here from CASA? Join me down front. Come on up, okay? Don't worry, tonight. Introduce yourself and tell them about CASA, okay? To know everything about it. This is your time to advertise.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I am Lisa Gallegos with CASA of Adams and Brumfield Counties. And thank you to Counselors, Mayor, City Manager for recognizing this very important month. It's Child Abuse Prevention Month, and it helps us to bring awareness to the community of the importance of supporting parents, strengthening families, and really building brighter futures for our children. And at CASA, we recruit, train, and supervise community members just like yourselves to become CASA volunteers, where you would advocate for kids that have experienced abuse and neglect, and also kids that are continuously missing school have become a big focus for us in this area. We are glad to have the support of Westminster, the City of Westminster. We were able to serve 58 children last year, and we just so appreciate your support in recognizing us with this proclamation.
And how many do you totally see?
448 last year across the, yeah, the Denver metro area. I'm sorry, the Adams County area and Brumfield. So thank you so much.
And I'm sure you could always use more.
Always, yes.
And I would be remiss without saying that a former counselor, Lindsay Emmons, is one of your CASAs.
Yes.
And...
Wonderful.
Yeah, I heard some of the stories and all heartbreakers. I don't know if it wasn't for the CASAs, these kids, I would be sad to know what they don't have and what they get with these CASAs. So if anybody listening hears this and has any time and would love to know more, please call and get some more information. So, and also tell them about if they want to support with the, we're going to be seeing blue pinwheels.
That's true, that's right. And we are, it's actually at the Adams County Courthouse. This tomorrow is the county proclamation for child abuse prevention, and blue pinwheels represent the month, and we'll be wearing blue tomorrow. And it's again, just a way that we get awareness out there of the need for CASAs and to support our children that have gone through these bad experiences.
Great. And I don't know if the city's going to have them for sale for $5, but you will find those around the city and county, so please help out. And I know my windmill, or little pinwheel goes up in my front yard planter so that people see it all the month. Whereas every child deserves to grow up in a nurturing environment free from harm and fear. And whereas all children do not receive appropriate care. In fact, too many become, children become victims at the hands of abusive perpetrators. And whereas every responsible person would agree that even one abused child is too many, and it is up to us as a community to tirelessly work to end the abuse of children through awareness and action. And whereas Westminster has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to encounter the problem of child abuse and to help parents obtain the assistance they need. And whereas effective child abuse prevention and advocacy programs such as CASA of Adams and Brumfield Counties succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas the community is stronger when all citizens become aware of child abuse prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. Now therefore, I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the Westminster City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2025 to be Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, and urge all citizens, community agencies, faith organizations, businesses to work collaboratively to increase their efforts to support families and prevent child abuse. Sign this 31st day of March, 2025. Thank you so much. We need to come over here, she says. Congratulations. Thank you so much. That brings us to a time for public comment. The public comment portion is an opportunity for the public to speak with the City Council. Each participant will have up to three minutes. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. If you wish to speak about a public hearing item, please hold your items until that item is called. Tonight, we have one public hearing, one on the Preliminary Development Plan Amendment for North Huron Planned Unit Development. The City Clerk has informed me that we have received, how many emails? We have, we received two emails. Which I've been transcribed, and we have them posted online. City Clerk, please call the first speaker to the podium. The first speaker is Charlene Willey.
Thank you and good evening. I'm here tonight to express my sincere thanks to the council's recent decision to request that Jefferson County Commissioners consider the four primary solutions offered by Save Our Skies SOS, a grassroots citizens group to combat the noise and pollution from the county-owned Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport, R-MMA. After seven years of advocacy from Westminster residents, it appears that Westminster City leadership has chosen to ask Jefferson County to consider the welfare of Westminster residents who are daily exposed to airborne micro particulate lead as well as other pollution and the nearly constant round-the-clock new noise that damages not only health but also severely degrades property values. These solutions have been offered repeatedly to JFC Commissioners and airport staff in many venues, including directly to the commission, as well as in the Community Noise Roundtable, where Westminster representatives were joined by reps from five other communities that also endured these same negative impacts. I want to extend a thank you to city staff for their work in drafting this letter. The version I've read is clear and concise and presents the most salient issues very well. I would also like to emphasize the hundreds of hours that community members have invested in researching and vetting these options. SOS members applied their professional skills to describe the harm to the community and offered workable solutions. Scientists, teachers, and real estate professionals worked together to describe and provide documentation and credible sources on the various harms inflicted on the community. Others, including college professors, attorneys, and financial experts, researched and carefully analyzed each of the solutions. Their work verified that these options were both available and attractive to Jefferson County. In other words, that they met FAA regulation that recommended alternative fuels were available and deliverable to the airport, that state law provided subsidies for this transition, and that examples of these suggested changes had been successfully implemented in similarly located, locally owned and operated airports across the United States. All of this demonstrates that when leadership and community work together, we can make progress. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gary Bland. Welcome.
Welcome, everybody. Gary Bland of Stanley Lake Homes. Good to see everybody. Everybody's silent today. The weather's been kind of good last week, now it's changing. I just want to speak in favor of our police department. I don't know if anybody's noticed that, but just lately, I've seen more people pulled over for speeding, and I love it. Believe it or not, there's some, every one of you guys, I love you for this. It's been long-awaited, you know? Now I'm feeling a little bit more safer driving out there, so I appreciate whatever, whoever's on this. It's great to hear. We're talking about the volunteer thing. I just heard something. I don't have any more time yet for that. I just joined the FISH program in southwest Westminster. Talked about a great program. The people I serve, we serve 60, me and my wife are volunteers, but actually, we, we, I'm going to take credit. I fed 60 people, that's what it feels like. So it was a wonderful feeling, the people. There's a gentleman that lives on the property that helps take care of it. I'm not going to mention his name because of rules, I guess. But anyways, we ran out of dog food, and I want to commend Obi over here. I made a call out, or actually, I think it was a Facebook post or something. We ran out of dog food. He jumped on it right away. This goes out to a credit to the dog guardians that actually do a great job out there. They got a cleanup process that's coming in. I still got time. So I just wanted to mention that they were out there. I met with her. They gave me like 80 pounds of food that I delivered over to the FISH. Thank you, Obi. Other than that, I want to do another shout-out to Eric, our Parks and Rec, you know, rec person. I could just tell you, this guy, been working with him. He is spectacular. And Jody, you need to hear this. I'm amazed at what he can do, just so you know. And that's all I have for today. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The next two speakers are going to come up together. It's Carrie Chaw and Tracy Yang. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Carrie Chaw, and I'm the Executive Director for the MONG American Association of Colorado. Alongside me is Tracy Yang. She is our MONG Language and Culture Director with H Mac. And tonight, we're here to just extend our gratitude, thanks really heartfelt for the City of Westminster for supporting one of our events that we held earlier this month, our inaugural gala that was held on Saturday, March 22. And I want to thank the City Council for showing up and attending our event, bidding in the silent auction, and helping us fundraise over $20,000 for our nonprofit organization to go back and serve the MONG community of Colorado. With that said, I want to share a little bit more about why we held this gala. Like I said, it was our inaugural gala. This year marks a really important milestone for the MONG people across the nation. It's 50 years since the first MONG families have moved to the United States after supporting the United States CIA in the Vietnam War. Our people were displaced and faced genocide, and it was the United States who gave us a place, a new place to call home. And in the past 50 years, our people have done an incredible job just assimilating to a new country and rebuilding their community right here. And in the state of Colorado, we have about 50,000 MONG people. And although our nonprofit is small, we are mighty, and we continue to fundraise. And we are volunteer-led organization, so we have to fundraise to be able to continue our programs and services, to continue serving the MONG people. And so with that said, I want to hand it off to Tracy to talk a little bit about what we plan to do with all this money that we were able to fundraise at this gala.
Good evening. Just briefly, we have three programs that are very active right now. The first one is the MONG Dance Academy. We started off with six girls and have grown to 34 girls this last year. Also with our MONG Language Program. The first time I taught it, I had about eight students, and now I have five classes since. And so it's really grown as well. And then we just started a youth leadership group. It's called the MONG Student of Colorado. That group, when it was founded many years back, it kind of dispersed because there wasn't a lot of support. So H Mac took it under its wings. And now just restarting, I would say about a month and a half ago, they now have 18 members and a group of high school and college students. So these are just some of our programs that we have, and we're just extremely grateful for all the support that the City of Westminster has provided to make these programs grow. I also want to just do a quick shout-out, and I know Carrie, we've talked a little bit about this, but I, for my full-time job, I work at Adams County Sheriff's Office, and so from one law enforcement agency to another, I want to thank the City of Westminster for your amazing officers who came out and provided security at our gala. And I'll have Carrie talk a little bit more about that, but thank you. And I'll have Carrie talk a little bit more about that, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Tracy. And yes, while we're speaking of our police officers, to echo Gary's comments earlier about the amazing job that Westminster PD is doing, the two officers, Officer Rizzi and Officer Johnson, who worked at our event that Saturday evening, their attitude, their approach to service was just incredible. They didn't show up to just do the job, but they actually engaged with our attendees, and they, they had full-blown conversations with them. And I think our Mong community, and we just appreciate that so much, to be able to have that type of connection to our local government and especially our public safety officers. It just means a lot to us. So we want to give a shout out to those two officers, again, Officer Rizzi and Officer Johnson, for volunteering to take up those shifts and then coming out and doing a fantastic job and really going above and beyond in what we asked of that, that evening. Lastly, I, I want to close out and just thank the city of Westminster once again for being an event sponsor, and then also the city council for attending. To us, that's the most important part, is the community partnership and collaboration in serving our community members. And your partnership and you showing up that evening meant so much to us as an organization, and more importantly, so much to our community members. Sorry, I'm going to give emotional. It's been a hard year so far for the Mong community, and to have our local government support us in this way means so much. And so as our community members face the fear of deportation, the fear of lack of support, the, the fear of having to stay inside their homes, you showing up and being supportive means the world to us. And I hope you can understand and see how grateful we are for your support and why we would be so happy to support the city of Westminster in any efforts or any initiatives. And I hope that you could see our willingness to support you in that way too and reciprocate in everything that you've given to us. So thank you so much on behalf of the Mong American Association of Colorado and all of the Mong people in the city of Colorado. Thank you to city staff, thank you to the city council, and to the entire Westminster community. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Carolyn Farbman. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor McNally and members of Westminster City Council. I want to sincerely thank you for your time and leadership in addressing the community's concerns about Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport. Your willingness to listen and act on this issue is deeply appreciated. I'd also like to thank and acknowledge Westminster city staff for taking the time to prepare a letter in support of the Save Our Skies Alliance Letter that was sent to Jefferson County Commissioners on February 4th, 2025. It is reassuring to see the majority of the council expressed desire to support this effort. I appreciate the thoughtful discussion among, among council members and the decision to move forward with a letter that is clear, direct, and aligned with the concerns of Westminster residents. Westminster City Council is taking a meaningful step in advocating for its residents and demonstrating a continued commitment to addressing the impacts of the airport. I'm grateful for your willingness to stand with the community on this issue. I also love how this aligns with the city's strategic priorities, particularly community empowerment and engagement by promoting open communication and community health and safety by taking proactive steps to protect the health, safety, and environment of Westminster. I am grateful for the council's leadership and dedication to our community. I recognize the many priorities you are managing, and I truly appreciate the time and effort you are investing in advocating for Westminster residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is John Palmer.
Welcome. Good evenings. Sorry, no handouts this evening, guys and ladies. Last time we were here, I asked, I spoke about the city employing out-of-state benefit employees. And the reason that this even comes to more light now is last week, when the HR director gave his budget presentation, he claimed there was no problem finding citizens, or finding people to fill the jobs here in the city. After I did a little research, come to find out, at this point, there are three that are benefit full-time, not living in the city, or, excuse me, in the state. One in public works, makes somewhere between 141,000 and 177,000. Two in the fire department, one at 120,000 and the other at 107,000. That's money that should be kept in our state, in our city, instead of going to another state. And again, that all comes about after hearing the director last week claim there was no problem finding employees. So I do believe there's another one, and I'm doing more research on that, and we'll get to the bottom of that. But I do believe there's a fourth that is not being accounted for at this point. Next, I'd like to talk about, last fall, there was an event called Jazz Under the Stars. It was held Friday, September 20th, 2024, at the 73L. That was Seventy-Third and Lowell. City sold 110 tickets at $10 apiece. Follow along, do the math, 110 tickets at $10 apiece. That's $1,100. Through a core report, I found out that that little event cost the taxpayers $42,000. Again, $42,000, and the city only recouped 1,100. Now, just simple math, take a population of 116,000, it's not fair to those people, but let's take that 110 tickets, divided by that $42,000, or, or, or let's just round it down to the $40,000, $41,000, excuse me, after the $1,100. That's $372 a person that was spent. How is that equitable to the other 120,000 people in this city? I ask. It's not. We need to keep, we, we need to stop wasting money frivolously and spend it on things we need, like the fire department, like our streets and maintenance. Not $42,000 jazz into the street, or jazz into the star parties. That's ridiculous. Just absolutely ridiculous. Thank, oh, and if, if anybody has any questions about it, I've got the core report here. I could go over it with you. If anybody would like to see the information I found on the employees, got it here too. I'd be more than happy to share it with any of you, you all, and how to get ahold of me. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker, oops, sorry. The next speaker is Jim Penimore. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Jody, staff. Good to see everybody tonight. Just a couple of things is, one, I really enjoyed the town hall meeting that you guys had with Jody and the mayor with the police chief of fire. I thought that was great communications for the city. You guys keep it up. I got my approval on it, and I imagine a lot of other people. One thing I would suggest is maybe just have one speaker coming in, so that we could have some more time for questions. Better than that, good job. Great. About a month ago, I brought up about the project that got into the wetlands over off the project for the Uplands that's going into Elk Creek. I think some of the staff or council thought maybe I paid out of my pocket to put the fence up. I walked around the construction job and picked up materials, and so it was just my labor, so nobody owes me any money for expenses. I wanted to clarify that, okay? And then same project, I got to give kudos to John Burke and staff. They came out, met me last week. We went over some things, and we're going to keep an eye on the, it sounds like, so we'll work together on that. So that's going to be a work in progress. Hopefully, the, the water will come back, because it's only about flowing about half the rate that it was. So thanks for staff for meeting myself and Art out there. Then also, there's a paving job coming up for Federal. It's going to start at 92nd and go all the way down to I-70. They're starting it, first phase is at 92nd and going to 36. I did contact C-Dot, hopefully that we could get all of the median improvements done before they go in there and put the fresh asphalt down, but I don't know if that's going to happen or not, so maybe somebody will be able to come up with some answers on that, because I wasn't able to get it out of them. And then one other thing was, is what John brought up, was the park at Seventy-Third and Lowell. You know, there's, there's not one plant. It's all gravel and tree trims, you know? It's, I talked to the people that in charge of the park, and they said that there wasn't any money in the budget to enhance that park other than any further than what it's at. So it kind of disappoints me that I hear that there was $42,000 spent on a party versus taken and improving the park. So that's what I've got. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker. Thank you. That brings us to city manager's report. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a report this evening. If I could get the next slide. While the slide's being pulled up, I'd like to thank all the speakers tonight. Thank you very much for coming and providing input to the city council and staff. That's greatly appreciated. Next slide, please. I have a few updates tonight for city updates. First is to let everybody know that April is National Language Access Month, and wanted to take the opportunity to emphasize the ongoing programs that we offer at our city libraries year-round related to language access. So at both our Irving Street and College Hill Libraries, we do have offerings that run throughout the year. The first is Mingle Languages, and that's an online language learning tool with over seventy languages, and that's available free to anyone with a library card. We also have books, movies, and audiobooks, as well as digital materials in other languages, as well as books and audiobooks to learn other languages. So please take advantage of those opportunities at both of our libraries. We, of course, Westminster is quite renowned for its citizenship classes, and those are weekly at Irving Street Library. Also, English conversation groups weekly at Irving Street Library. The Spanish Conversation Group is held virtually, and that's every week. And there's also a bilingual storytime that is also weekly at our Irving Street Library. So you can go online and find access to any of these programs year-round, but I want to highlight it as part of the National Language Access Month. Next slide, please. I would also like to let everybody know, Mayor, Mayor, Portland, and City Council, that the city again has won the national prestigious budget award. The city earned the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for Westminster's 2025 Budget, and this is the fifth consecutive year. And I would point out that it does coincide with the hiring of Mr. Larry Doerr as our Chief Financial Officer, and this is five years running for Mr. Doerr and our budget team in our Policy and Budget Office. This award demonstrates that the city's committed to the top national budgeting standards. And so again, top of the nation, five years running. Next slide, please. By way of city update, most of you will have heard, but maybe not realize, that with the announcement that the Sundance Film Festival is now moving to Boulder, Colorado, that's in 2027. That, of course, is a regional team effort, and Westminster was a significant player in that. 2027 will be the first of ten years for that festival, which is now relocated permanently on that basis to Boulder, just up north of us. The annual impact in Utah, where it currently is, is estimated to be just about $13 million per year, with support from city council that weighed into the award and movement of that film festival to Boulder this year, and that the city and our staff is ready to support the event and position our local hotels, movie theaters, restaurants, and retailers to participate and, and benefit from, from the Sundance Film Festival moving to Boulder. So you will see that more on this in Westminster. We were part of that team that put in for that, so I'll, I'll have more updates on that coming. Next slide, please. I have two slides on tonight's agenda. The first, we've heard, and I want to thank our CASA representative to accept the proclamation designating April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. I want to highlight in our public packet, this is available in the material tonight, a progress and update report on the renovations of 3915 West Seventy-Third Avenue and the Bark Restaurant. So anyone who didn't catch that, that is in our public packet, and that's available by way of update. Tonight, we have on consent agenda, seven items, and these include three second readings. We also have one public hearing tonight, and that is the consideration of a preliminary development plan amendment for the North Huron Planned Unit Development area. And as noted earlier in the evening, the comprehensive plan amendment and consideration of a PDP amendment for the Uplands filing has been, continued to happen on the night of April 14th, so two weeks tonight. Next slide, please. Second slide on tonight's agenda, we have items up for new business. The first of that is a first reading of a councilor's bill amending the Westminster Municipal Code regarding signs and signage in the city. The second is first reading of councilor's bill amending the Westminster Municipal Code to create a new public, public way contractor's license. And staff's available to answer any questions around that exciting initiative. Third up is a first reading of a councilor's bill for a proposed development assistance agreement with Maker Housing Partners for a proposed affordable housing development at Uplands. Next up is the adoption of the Park's Recreation and Libraries Vision Plan. And finally, on new business, discussion on support for the Save Our Skies Alliance Letter to Jefferson County Commissioners. And then we do have one item of old business, which is passing on second reading, Councilor's Bill Number Two Regarding Anordinance, Amending the Westminster Municipal Code for Unclaimed Intangible Property. Next slide, please. This week, there is cancellation, so there will be no special permit and license board meeting on Wednesday evening this week, April 2nd. There is a budget town hall and infrastructure open house scheduled for Thursday, April 3rd, so that will be with city council and staff and all members of the community who are interested in participating in that open house, and that's at City Park Recreation Center, and that will run from 5:30 PM on Thursday, April 3rd through to 8:00 PM that night. And then on Friday, April 4th, there is a pop-up dance and mingle event from 5 o'clock to 8:00 PM at our swim and fitness center. And of course, you can get all the information you need from our website on those events. Next slide, please. We have a, a meeting coming up, a study session next Monday, April 7th, that starts at 6:30. Next room to the council chambers here, and that will be, for information only, four items, 2025 Pride Event and Partnership Opportunities, the 2024 Sustainability Plan Report. So this is an annual report out on our sustainability initiatives. Last year, we have official city positions taken on legislation being considered by the Colorado General Assembly, and we also have recommended updates to the City Westminster Strategic Plan based on council's workshop on that, on that plan recently. Next will be four presentations. The first will be 2025 City Council Engagement Calendar. So this is a review of all of the upcoming events that city council wishes to provide direction and participate in throughout the rest of this year. We also have a mid-session update on the 2025 State Legislative Session. We have an initial 2026 budget development direction from city council, so reviewing next steps in terms of building the 2026 budget. And then we have a Chief of Staff Office Budget Presentation that same night. Finally, there will be an executive session that evening, which will be the discussion of a personnel matter, which is city council's quarterly check-in for the presiding judge. Next slide, please. Finally, there will be a Westminster Economic Development Authority Study Session that same night, and that is a presentation regarding the potential partnership and contract between the Westminster Economic Development Authority, or WIDA, and the Westminster the Westminster Economic Development Authority, or WIDA, and the Westminster Chamber of Commerce, and that's for activation in downtown Westminster. Next slide, please. You can reach me at any time, the city manager's office, 303-658-2003, or jandrews@westminsterco.gov, and of course, follow the city on any one of our four social media accounts, Facebook, Instagram, X, or Nextdoor. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions, city manager? Thank you for your great report. Council comments, anyone? Councilor Carmelia?
Yes, thank you to all of our speakers. We got some really high praise this evening, and that's always noted. It's a nice shining star amongst everything else we've received over the years, so thank you. I just wanna say it was really an honor to be at the gala for the MONG celebration. I got to learn a lot about the initiatives that the money is going towards, including the classes around language, because I, as someone who really deeply appreciates language, I think it's important to understand that the heritage is passed down through preserving the language, and there has to be a lot of effort into, that goes into that, as well as around the dance, and we got to hear the numbers around how much that has expanded. So, I just wanna say thank you for inviting us to that. It really was an honor to be there, and I'm really excited to see the efforts that you're making within our community here for the students of those classes. And I wanna acknowledge the several speakers that acknowledged our police force. We received high, the force received high praise, and it gives me the feeling that I've heard from the chief and the staff that I believe there's been, you know, a bit of a cultural shift among the force, and it seems clear that it's tangible within the community. So, thank you, residents, for noticing and, and praising them on it, and thank you to our chief and our officers for all the great work you do. I do wanna acknowledge the comments made by Mr. Palmer on the budget regarding the PRL events we have. We've brought that up in the past, and as we know, this year, we're doing a really extensive deep dive on our budget, so I want folks to know that we are taking all matters considering the budget very seriously. And of course, we have our open house this Thursday to bring further comments and thoughts around how we use our money and where it goes, so please attend that, so we can hear from you. And I think it might be worth the breakdown of, you know, which, which events break even, but I also wanna acknowledge the incredible work our staff has been doing about creating events that seem to give real great turnout, and we do wanna concentrate on those third spaces for the community, especially for families with kids, and providing places that families can go that don't cost them, right? So, well, it's all about striking that balance and determining how we best meet the need. I also wanted to thank the CASA representative for being here. As a former foster child, the work you do does not go missed. I understand deeply how important it is, the CASA work of volunteers, and so thank you to the mayor for asking for more volunteers to step up to that job. It's an important one, and I did not have one, and I wish I had. And then, I also wanna give sincere thank you and congratulations to our libraries' leadership. Thank you to Joel Cuthbertson and Amy Rada and the rest of our libraries team. As a city that appreciates our readers, I just wanna say thank you for having that author, Shelley Reed, here in our Westminster city. That was, it was a real honor, and there were, it was an impressive turnout for that reading. And it's not every day that you get to attend a book signing from the author themselves, and we get to do it for free right here in Westminster, because our staff do the work in bringing the authors right here, and do the work in providing a book club. And that's something that, I love book clubs, and I don't have the time and energy to put it on myself, and so deeply thank you for doing this for our community, and I think it's a one-of-a-kind type of service. And you could tell with the turnout, we kept having to put more chairs up, we didn't have enough, that it's clear that the community really values it as well. And that author, she was truly inspiring, and so I'm excited to read her work, and it was an honor to have her here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ireland?
Thank you for all the citizens that came out tonight. I appreciate it more the merrier for me. I like to hear from you and what, what you're, enlightened me. Thank you for the two MONG ladies that came and shared what they're volunteering to do. I appreciate that you volunteer, and that it's not a paid position. I appreciate that, that people are really volunteering. I appreciate Carolyn and Charlene for coming out and being advocates for those people affected by the airport. I know it's been a long battle, and, you know, you have my support. I know what you're going through, even though I don't live there, I've seen it, and I'll continue to be an advocate for you. I appreciate all of the spoken. Gary, thank you for your words. Our pleas are great. I know a few of them, and I really respect them. And thank you, Mr. Palmer, for enlightening me about people that do not live in our state that work for our city. That's very upsetting to me. Also, I think some of these events that aren't for the majority of the people are something that we need to look at, 'cause we're all paying for them as taxpayers, and our economy is not what it was a few years ago, and we need to be mindful of whose money we are spending and how we're spending it, and that it's for our core services, and that we really take heart about whose money we're spending. And I appreciate those that appreciate me for caring about your, your taxes and, and your water bills, and all those things that affect your lives, and paying for your family. And so, I will continue to be an advocate for you, and even though it's not easy some days, and I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional, but sometimes I feel like I'm alone, and I'm sure some of these people that fight for their airport affecting their lives feel the same as I do about people struggling to pay their bills. So, thanks for coming out, and thanks for being advocates for the citizens. Thank you.
Councilor Azadi?
Thank you. Just wanting to echo all of the, my fellow colleagues' comments. I appreciate all of you for being here. Charlene and Carolyn, your advocacy all these years hasn't gone unnoticed, and I thank you for that. And to the MONG community, we have your back. Just know that. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thanks to everybody that's come out. Everybody said it very well, but to Carrie and Tracy. Carrie, I reacted the way you reacted tonight, reading the scholarships that I read for you all, and it was all about, they had to write what the MONG tradition meant to them. Talk about being alone and feeling alone. I felt that in some of those written scholarship pieces that I read, and it broke my heart. And as I talk to our school districts, and it isn't just MONG students, it's anyone that feels different, and what are we doing to help people in those issues? But I know tradition is key for you all. And Tracy, for you, teaching the language, I've watched some of the instruments that when we started, I was invited to the MONG New Year right after Thanksgiving and started coming, and some of the instruments that were played at that time are no longer played because they weren't able to be passed on, and that just breaks my heart, because they were wonderful. I loved listening, and I just keep hoping somebody will be interested and figure it all out, and we'll have those again. But for the dancing, the girls that danced that night, they were wonderful. So, thank you for even putting the gala together. You did a great job. I can remember the first event we ever had, and you, you didn't understand agendas, and you didn't understand so much. You have come a long way, and you have done a fantastic job, and you've listened, and you've learned, and you've asked, and you do have advocates that are here to help you in whatever you need, so don't ever be afraid to ask. And we did have extra room at our table. I was wishing I had known that. I would've asked our city manager to make sure our MONG officer, and I don't even know if he's married or not, but that he could've brought somebody to enjoy that. I know they would've. So, anyway, thank you for all of that you have done. Thanks for staying so that we can talk to you tonight, but you keep, keep fighting and advocating, because those students that I read their letters to, you give them hope. And I know you could only give two scholarships away, but I felt honored that I was able to get a little bit of, of their thoughts, and as my husband said, I cried through every one of them, so. To everyone else that talked, I just always appreciate whatever you bring forward, and I can't say enough. Budget Town Hall, we need everyone and every voice there, because this is a budget that is beginning its process to work its way through, and if we don't have your voice back as we get forward into September and October, it's too late. Now is when we need to hear from you, and we need to hear what's your priorities and, and share with us. So, I hope to see, and bring neighbors, bring friends. If you're in the grocery store, invite them. We need everybody at, at City Park. And we do have, I don't think we said we have childcare that night from, till 11 years old?
Three months until 11 years old, yes.
Okay. And I also heard that we're having apparatus, maybe a fire truck and things kids can climb on from 5:30 to 6:00, and then the kids can go play, and adults will start working. So, it is a family affair. So, seeing nothing else, that brings us to our consent agenda, and is there a motion for items 8A through 8G? Councilor Ireland?
I make motions for items 8A through 8G.
Councilor Azadi?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda, items 8A through 8G. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Councilor Carmelia?
Yes.
Councilor Azadi?
Yes.
Councilor Haught?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
And Councilor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-0 vote. Thank you. That brings us to public hearings. Do we have staff first, that we're opening public hearing in consideration of a preliminary development plan amendment for North Huron Planned Unit Development, and it is 7:52, and I will open the public, public hearing. Microphone's not working.
Thank you. John McConnell, Planning Manager here. Good evening, Mayor and city councilors. This is the present, staff presentation for North Huron Preliminary Development Plan A staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices published in the Westminster window, the mailed notices and the posted notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing will mail to 357 property owners' addresses and two HOAs within 1,000 feet of the subject property. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. This map shows the North Huron PUD. It's outlined in red. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of West 142nd Avenue and Huron Street, and just south of St. Anthony's Hospital. This is an image from the PDP, and this is a site plan from the PDP. This PDP aligns the allowed uses with the current 2040 comprehensive plan designations. No other access points or any other variables have been changed on the PDP from this current approved one. The current approved PDP is in alignment with previous comprehensive plans, and again, this revision aligns it with our current comprehensive plans permitted uses. Section 11514 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains ten criteria that would be considered when reviewing rezonings and PDPs. Staff finds that the PDP amendment generally meets these criteria, as outlined in more detail on the agenda memo. Staff recommends that the city council hold a public hearing and approve the Preliminary Development Plan Amendment. The Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor of recommendation for approval with conditions 7 to 0. Staff finds that the approval of the application will meet the city's strategic plan priority of economic vitality by facilitating the development of additional employment land within the city. And the applicant's with us tonight has a presentation to share with you as well. Thank you for your attention, and if you have any questions for me or my staff, we'll be available.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Craig Karn. I'm the Director of Design with THK Associates, and we're in Greenwood Village, Colorado. Thank you, John, for that very thorough presentation. I'm gonna try to be as concise as possible, because it's very redundant, our presentation's pretty simple, but again, we'll be here. And Fred Cook, who represents the ownership group, is here, and I'll ask him to speak when I'm complete about where his next steps are after the SOVP, hopefully after you gave approval tonight. With that, that, onto the next slide, thank you. Oh, you want me to advance it? I can do it. There we go. We saw the vicinity map before, so I think if you have any questions about that, we can certainly answer it. Well, now I hit the wrong button. There we go. I'm gonna go back one. Again, the existing conditions, there's no, there's no touchy button. You can go back here. That's my idea of that finger. Okay, so, again, our effort with this PDP amendment is to bring it in alignment with your 2040 comprehensive plan. We've actually been working on that concurrently with the plan's development and approval, and working with staff all along the way to get to this point this evening. You can see that they used it as identified, or really to encourage employment, but they think it's very important on the, on the kind of western side and southern part of the parcel, and also just to support the, the hospital and the medical industry and have those support services there. All the uses that exist, this is a listing, and I'd be glad to come back and talk of it, talk through it, but I'm not gonna do that and drag you through that tonight. The changes, again, very simple changes, hope most of it to bring it into alignment with the comprehensive plan and opportunities in the current marketplace to bring, bring new development in. These are the, directly really from the comprehensive plan, employment and flex uses, and everything as proposed supports those uses as identified. Same with the parcels east of Orchard Parkway. Again, the site plan there is essentially the same as the currently approved plan. This is really just to focus on getting the, you know, appropriate identification of uses on each of the parcels, some minor modifications on a couple of access, probably private street issues, but it's fundamentally the same plan that it has been. There's no, there's no current construction that would be a part of this approval, that will be future ODPs that will come forward, and there's, there are some in different parts of that development process. We are currently working on an ODP, which is in its very final stages of approval for landscape for our portion of Orchard Parkway and the McKay Channel, so we hope to get that approved and see that landscape improvements begin later this year. We'll field any questions. Fred, would you like to speak at all about any of the proposed uses, or where we're going from here?
I can.
Touch on the gray three. No, we'll field any questions, you may.
Okay. Welcome.
Hello, my name's Fred Cook, and I'm one of the members of the ownership group of the project, and I'd just like to thank council and staff for all the work they've helped us get through with this project. What we really, we're
What we've really worked hard to do is bring it into compliance with the 2040 comprehensive land use plan that has been adopted by the city. And by passing of or approval of our amended PDP, what that's going to do is going to allow us to move forward with the project because it brings it in compliance with the comp plan. And our amendment will allow us now to move forward with both putting in roads, landscape improvements, that's just going to generally advance the overall development of the project, which is basically just south of the hospital. And I'd just like to thank everybody. I think we've worked very closely with staff, and they did a great job of helping guide us through the project and the process.
Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up for public testimony? We have no one signed up for public testimony. Okay. Council questions? Counselor Ireland?
Well, the only concern I have is with hotels because they take a lot of water. And I've talked to planning staff before about it, about a hotel that, I know they use a lot of water. So did we take that in consideration when we allow the change for hotels?
That has certainly been a part of discussion all the way through that process. I think that can become a much more finite discussion when a hotel proposal comes forward and can be able to demonstrate what the actual uses will be.
Okay.
We have work with staff on that.
All right. And also, I guess I lost track of my other thought, but thanks for that. I guess I don't have anything else, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Carmelia?
Thank you. I appreciate this support, our comprehensive plan. With the current economic uncertainty, and this might be more for our city staff, I realize we come to you all the time asking the same question. But how confident are we that this will be filled in? It looked like it was mostly for office space. Is that right? And if not, what are, and this will be the second part of the question, back to developers, what are all of the uses expected to be?
So I'm not well positioned to predict the market, but this is in 100% alignment with our comprehensive plan. What I think we'll see more of is medical office, research and development, facilities and laboratories associated with the medicine, the field of medicine. I know there's some interest in some rehab facilities and nursing home type facilities that would coexist around that medical campus.
That makes sense since we already have the hospitals there, so.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ireland?
I remember what my other thought was. So I know that we've had trouble getting electrical power out to that area. Is that still a problem?
I'm not aware that it is. Staff, do you have any thoughts on it?
We're not aware of an immediate issue in that area. There are some issues in other parts of town, but we're not aware of it.
But not that one? Okay. I guess I was mis-told. Thank you.
Well, I'll add that we don't have a development proposal in front of us. This is just a PDP at that time. We'll reach out through the developer review process to Excel, and we'll understand what the capabilities are adoptively.
All right, thank you.
That's what I was going to ask. Is it Excel or United Power?
I assumed it was Excel, but I may be wrong. I could check with the, or we can ask.
I just remember when we went on a tour of streetlights and we went up there, it was United Power folks that we met with. So I don't know where the zigzags go.
Excuse me, as a developer, I can, excuse me, but as a developer, I do know it is United Power.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you all.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, staff have anything else? It is 8:04. I will close the public hearing. And do we have a motion? Counselor Azadi?
I move to approve the 13th Preliminary Development Plan Amendment for North Huron Planned Unit Development. This recommendation is based on the finding that the Preliminary Development Plan generally complies with the criteria in Section 11514 Westminster Municipal Code.
Counselor Ha?
I second.
It's been moved in second to pass item 10A6. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Azadi?
Just wanted to say thank you to the developers and for staff for bringing this forward. I think that it will help us to diversify our supply base. I think we need to activate that area. And there's a lot of potential for whether it's innovation or service gaps with nursing facilities. So whatever does come in, I'm very curious to see what that is. But thank you for bringing this forward.
I agree. I think it does bring us in line with the 2040 plan. So thank you for that, and thanks to staff for all your work. Roll call, please. Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
And Counselor Carmel, sorry, Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
And the motion passes on a 5-0 vote. That brings us to new business, item A, first reading of Counselor's Bill Number 6. Counselor Ha?
I move to pass Counselors' Bills Number 6 on first reading to approve the proposed amendments to Section 1119B, 1119D, 1111B, and 111114C of the Westminster Municipal Code concerning post signs, subdivision entry signs, drive-through signs, and additional sign allowances for large developments within the sign code.
Counselor Azadi?
Second.
It's been moved in second to, on first reading, passed Counselor, the first reading of Counselor's Bill Number 6. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-0 vote. That brings us to Counselor's Bill Number 8. Counselor Azadi?
I move to pass Counselor's Bill Number 8 on first reading to amend Title 5, Chapter 5, and Title 9, Chapter 2 of the Westminster Municipal Code relating to the addition of a new public way contractor's license for persons or entities performing limited work in the city's rights of way, easements, and public property.
Counselor Ha?
Second.
It's been moved in second to pass Counselor's Bill Number 8. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
And Counselor Ha?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-0 vote. That brings us to Counselor's Bill Number 9. Counselor Ha?
I move to pass Counselor Bill, Counselor Bill Number 9 on first reading authorizing the city manager to execute a development assistant agreement with the Adams County Housing Authority, DBA, Maker Housing Partners, authorizing 100% rebates of permit fees, park development fees, and sales and use taxes to the city, but specifically excluding from any rebate the 0.25% portion for the open space tax and the 0.60% public safety tax on construction materials in amount not to exceed $555,751 in addition to the allocation of $1,071,489 in home investment partnership programs funds for a total assistance package not to exceed $1,627,240 for the development of a 70-unit affordable multifamily development and a Head Start classroom located within the Uplands.
Counselor Azadi?
Second.
It's been moved in second to pass Counselor's Bill Number 9. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Carmelia?
Thank you. Thank you, staff, and thank you to Maker Housing. This is precisely the type of affordable housing that our city needs more of. And so thank you for the collaboration and partnership and bringing this to us.
Counselor Ireland?
I will be voting no on this. I'm all for home ownership, and I think this keeps people from getting ownership in homes, trying to keep up with rent all the time. I think we need to find a pathway to help people own their own properties. So I will be voting no because this is another tax subsidy by the taxpayers. Thanks.
Roll call, please. Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 4-1 vote. That brings us to adoption of Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Vision Plan. Counselor Azadi?
I move to adopt the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Vision Plan.
Counselor Ha?
Second.
It's been moved in second to adopt the Parks and Recreation and Libraries Vision Plan. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Carmelia?
Thank you. Quick thank you to staff. Thank you to Acting Director Eric Otzelberger for your quick response. I had a question on something, some items I found. I just found the one, but I just want to keep the document open, I guess, because I haven't, I'm sure that we have had staff look through it. But I propose that I will be saying yes, but I just want to make sure that we keep it. I don't know what the proposed plan is, but maybe for another week or two, just making sure that everything is as accurate as possible before we close it formally. I don't know what your thoughts are to that or if we think this is the only error that will be found, but just any thoughts there?
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Manager. Eric Otzelberger, Acting Director of Parks, Recreation, Libraries. Counselor Carmelia, appreciate your eagle eyes, and we corrected that pie chart that was from the 2022 American Community Survey. So we have all the data there, but the team is going through with a fine-tooth comb. I know it's a voluminous document. The 88-page summary is there, but there are hundreds of pages of appendices and all the public engagements. So we do have time after your policy direction this evening. We will work with the consultant team for one final review. We have an ability to make those little tweaks and changes before it's the final transmittal, and then we use that going forward and publish on the website and things of that nature, if that's helpful.
I appreciate you and your team doing that. That does make me feel better. Thank you. And I know that, you know, there was a lot of work put into this, and there are data was collected from a lot of different sources, and I do understand that. So thank you, and thank you and the team for the extensive comprehensive work. This, as we know, will be our guiding document for the next 10 to 20 years. And so I think that's why it's so important that everything is accurate. And thank you for all the work that it took collecting stakeholder engagement and making sure that we understand what it is the city wants to see more of.
Well, thank you. And the amount of community engagement and input around this is tremendous. I mean, maybe absent the comprehensive plan, I haven't seen this level of engagement. So this is, will be very important for us going forward. And the staff team, a couple of members here this evening, Operations Manager Alex Reeves and Parks, Horticulture, and Planning Design Superintendent Blake Ramsey have done a tremendous job leading the team on this. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Counselor Azadi?
Just wanted to commend staff. It's been a long road. And I think you're right. I haven't seen this level of engagement on a project at the city probably since the comp plan. So it's a remarkable achievement. It's a lot in there. It's a lot to read through. And as the liaison for Parks, Recreation, and Library, the board, I know they went through it. And I want to thank you and them and everyone that's been involved.
Well, thank you. And very quickly, I would be remiss, and you know, we referenced the comprehensive plan. Andrew Spurgeon, Principal Planner, started this project in interdepartmental partnership. So he sets such a strong foundation for this. So we really owe Andrew Spurgeon for giving us off in the right direction.
And that is a testament to all of the departments who work so closely together, right? This is one of the products of that kind of teamwork and collaboration. So thank you all.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-0 vote. That brings us to City Council Discussion Approval of a Draft Letter in Support of Save Our Skies Alliance. Comments? Do we have a motion? Counselor Ireland?
Thank you all for bringing this to the table so we could all vote on it. I appreciate it. And I will be voting yes for sure. Thank you.
Counselor Azadi?
Yeah, thank you all for bringing this up forward.
Counselor Ha?
I just want to echo what the other two counselors said. Thank you so much for bringing this forward, and I'm very glad that council has decided to put this on the agenda.
Counselor Carmelia?
Well, I'm a little torn because I kept expecting a counselor to make the motion. So shall I?
That's what I'm waiting for.
All right. I move to authorize the mayor to sign the attached letter indicating city council support for the Save Our Skies Alliance Colorado on February 4th, 2025, letter to the Jefferson County Commissioners.
Counselor Ha?
I second.
It's been moved in second to authorize the mayor to sign the attached letter indicating city council support for the Save Our Skies Alliance. Do we have any further discussion? Counselor Carmelia?
Thank you. I want to echo the comments made earlier. Thank you to those who've worked so hard to find the right path forward between the airport and the county and our city. And thank you, Mayor, for coming up with this suggestion because I think that this is the right path. I fully agree with the contents of the letter, and I agree with supporting our letter. And I think that this is the right approach for our city to take in supporting our residents to make sure that their efforts are heard for our commissioners and yet guaranteeing a path forward for us to continue working with the commissioners.
And I know Mayor Protem isn't here and Counselor Demott, but I ask them, even though they can't vote tonight, could I publicly share? They are in favor of this letter. So you only may have a 5-0 vote tonight, but it would have been 7-0 had they been sitting here. So it's important for you to know that. Roll call, please. Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
And Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-0 vote. That brings us to Counselor's Bill Number 2. Counselor Ha?
I move to pass Counselor Bill, Counselor's Bill Number 2 on second reading approving and ordinance amending Section 129.3 of the Westminster Municipal Code regarding unclaimed intangible property.
Counselor Ireland?
Second.
It's been moved in second to pass Counselor's Bill Number 2. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-0 vote. Before we adjourn, City Attorney Frankel, do we have a reason for executive session?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's agenda does include an executive session to consult with the city attorney on legal issues involving land use in Article 20, Section 6 of the Colorado Constitution pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 111.3C8 and Colorado Revised Statute 2464024B.
Could I ask each counselor to give your name and that you're willing to go into executive session?
Obie Azadi, yes.
Claire Carmelia, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Amber Ha, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
It is 8:17, and this meeting is adjourned, and we can take a few-minute break before we start our executive session. we start our executive session.